We are very interested in the storm that is coming. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the July 22nd, 2024 School Board Meeting to order. Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Director Lala Burdi.
Here.
T Felton.
Here.
Human.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
And Claflin.
Here.
That's five yeas.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as the work session and regular meeting minutes from June 24th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion passes. The agenda is approved. And tonight, we will get started with our Quality in Action. So I'd like to invite Amy Winter and Robyn Schwab to highlight our Summer Learning Academy.
Thank you for having us, Board of Education, or just here. So this is my first time without a little mouse, so how do I click on through? All right. So thank you for having us. In the Educational Department, we've been very busy planning all kinds of programming for all the students, from all the way ECFE through credit recovery in the high school. So at this time, we just want to highlight some of the things that are going on right now, because the programs are still going. So usually, we do an end-of-the-summer recap where we give the final results of everything, but it's all still going right now. So when we're talking about summer programming, it really is a team lift between all of the different departments across the entire district. So think of it as like a mini-school year. So we started in January and crossed all over from Human Resources to Finance to Food Service. I mean, all of these meetings were happening in figuring out how each of these students were going to qualify and how we could support each of the students with the needs that they do have. The programs that we're going to highlight come from different areas that are all represented across the district. We have some highlights from Community Ed, some early learning, the Elementary Summer Learning Academy, some programs at our middle school, our high school credit recovery, and our special services. We'll start with Community Education, which Jean Zender leads as the Director of Community Through them, they have programming that starts all the way from early childhood, all the way through our adult and senior programming. So some of the highlights that they wanted to put forward this year were some of the new programs that they have with some of the numbers that they have of the people attending. Starting with our ECFE, so this covers the birth all the way through age five. They have nine weeks of programming that they have located at the Family Education Center, and it's a drop-in place, so we have some that take advantage of every opportunity and some that are just here and there. And that's Thursdays from 9:00 to 12:00. We have 115 students that are enrolled in our Kids' Choice Program, so that gives not only our families flexibility, but it gives continuity for our students to come. And it's located at Capoja Education Center, and they provide 11 weeks of programming, and that's Monday through Friday. And we start as early as 6:30 and go all the way till 5:30 PM. The Youth Enrichments Aquatic Program, that has expanded this year, and so they have three different levels where they have a swim club, and then they have swimming lessons that are open to the public, and swimming lessons that they're going to, or that they offered for our Kids' Choice students. And so it's a growing program there. The Gymnastics Program still continues to expand, and so there's 413 participants this summer. So if you're wondering where all of our kids are, it's there. They're all doing gymnastics, apparently. So there's some great programming that's happening at our Community Ed sites.
Because it's Olympic year.
That's correct. And then our adult basic education, we do have about 20 adult learners, 12 EL, and eight GED students that are going to go for their GED. Now, 271 seniors in our community are participating in the senior fitness classes, so I think that's something to highlight as well. And they are having some new programs there to tap into some of the interests of our community. So they have Writing Your Own Will, that's popular, and then they are starting an artist, it's Unleashing Your Inner Artist. So that's what's going on in our Community Ed world. For our Summer Learning Academy, we moved back to Capoja Education Center this year, and we ended up having 280 students that are enrolled, and this is serving students going into first grade through fifth grade. We have approximately four sections that are going on at each grade level, and we ended up making a push for our multilingual learners this year, and we provided some more supports in that area. And then we really focused on, we had our STEM curriculum that we were using, our engineering as elementary kits, so we made sure that we were really focusing on that, but we supplemented with our literacy program, and we got math curriculum that we were able to implement for the first time. So we're previewing a lot of those materials this year for full implementation next year. So the materials that we got and the feedback from the students so far is, it's all hands-on learning, and there is not a whole lot for digital platforming on any of this curriculum. And the feedback that we're getting from the students and staff is that they're having fun, and they really like that. As part of some of the community partnerships, they have partnered with the Community Education or the High School Theater, and they have some other people performing. So they had some outside artists come in, they had some musicians come in, and then they've had the Ninja Course up there. So there's a multitude of different programs that they have in addition to the academics. And one piece that I want to highlight that I was able to see was they made solar ovens in their fourth-grade class, and they ended up making smores with that. So that was self-serving, I went to go eat smores. There's some really cool things that were happening there. K-Camp just started today, so that went back to their home sites where these incoming kindergartners are going to be attending their homeschool that they go to. So even some of our kindergarten teachers that were helping in SLA, they switched back, and so they were there to welcome the kindergartners today at their home sites. This really gives them the opportunity to see what school day looks like, just to get them in the building, and so they are ready to go. And the parents feel a little bit more comfortable as well when they're dropping their kindergartners off at school. Middle School, this is ran by Principal Leah Borg, and we have a few programs that are going on right now. We have Summer Learning Academy at our middle level, and that has math, language arts, and social studies that is being taught through hands-on curriculum. And the final day for them is this Thursday, and they have a culminating fun day at Valley Fair. So they learned for their program, and then they're going to celebrate on Thursday. We have sixth-grade intervention. There is not a slide for that, but that was identified students that got some more academic help that they would need in the areas of math, reading, and they also had a component with some art to help break up their day. And then Packer Preview, we did stick with two separate sessions this year, so we were able to accommodate families in June and July. And so I believe we were able to get over half of the students that are coming into sixth grade, that were able to come and spend a couple weeks with us, learning all about sixth grade and how the transitions work between classes, how the lunchroom works, making sure they know how to do their combination lock, and all of the stressful things that come with moving to the middle school. In ninth through 12th grade, that is our credit recovery program for our high school students. So to qualify, these are students that have taken the course, and they are primarily going back to just earn that credit that they need. So they're not going there to move ahead, they are going there to essentially know, to show what they know and to move on and start moving towards graduation. So a piece of feedback that we had was, we had moved to two classes that students were able to enroll in in the previous year. We were offering to students this year for the first time, they had an opportunity to earn three credits at one time. So if they finish early, they could start another course, but otherwise, we will get the data at the end of this week when they finish their final courses. But at this point, we already have 167 courses that were completed early. So we are really looking forward to seeing what the end result is, and we had a couple offerings. Instead of just doing all Odysseyware software-based assessments, we were able to offer some project components for some of those students to show their learning off of a computer. And we do have 277 students that are enrolled. Extended School Year, this is provided through special services. These are students who have services that are identified on their IEP. They have programming at both early ages and all the way through high school, and they have specific goals that they are working on while they are attending extended school year with us at each of the sites. They have a big project that's going to come out on Thursday. They've all worked together, and there's going to be an Olympic Field Day that's going to occur at Lincoln Center. So that's going on. So 38 students are going to be participating in it, as well as some of the students help plan it and will help facilitate some of the events. So that's the end event for our extended school year programs, students that happen on Thursday. So a lot of things are going on, and a lot of things are closing up this Thursday. So I ran over everything pretty fast, but if you have any questions, I welcome them now.
Can you go back towards the middle school numbers? We got numbers on how many kids were participating in the other programs, and I might have missed that.
Oh, sure. For Packer Preview, we had 107.
Nice.
For Sixth Grade Intervention, those were 21 students, and for Summer Learning Academy, we had 47.
Thank you.
So, and these were the numbers of students that not just enroll, but we have to actually count who shows up.
Yeah.
So those were the true numbers for those.
That's great. Lots of ways for students to stay engaged over the summer and get the help they need to continue learning. It looks like learning is fun, and with the Summer Learning Academy for the elementary school students, they might not even notice that they're being taught something, they're just having so much fun, learning along the way. I love that. I'd like to hear just a little bit more about what credit recovery looks like, if students have so much flexibility to work on finishing courses at their own pace.
Sure.
Could you tell me more about how it's done online?
I certainly can. So we have programming that runs Monday through Thursday, and students are scheduled for three, we have three blocks in that day. So if they need to take three classes, they're scheduled for those three classes. If they only need the one, we work with their families to figure out which time works the best for them. So they would rotate just like their school year, where they would have three separate blocks that they would attend to get that support. They need to be in the classroom with that licensed teacher, and they do a pre-assessment for every course that they ended up getting a zero or no credit in. And so after taking that pre-assessment, it really does a nice job of filtering out the exact standards that those students need to get proficient in to earn that credit. So if a student ends up needing the entire class, they can have that entire class. If they only need to do three units, they end up just getting what they need and when they need it. And so the tests have to be proctored in front of the teacher, but that licensed teacher is there to help review and help assess the student, because a lot of times, students will say, I have this knowledge, but I'm unable to show it here. So teachers being in the licensed content area can help assess them through different like modes. So that's the structure, it's three class periods, three blocks, Monday through Thursday. And if they wanted to start a new class, we start kids every Monday. And then that will help address, too, if a student says, oh, I'm going on vacation, I couldn't go to the first week, am I out of any of the credit recovery? And it's no, we'll keep enrolling students every Monday.
That's great. So responsive to what the kids need and making sure that they're getting the pieces filled in that they need and not repeating content that they do know, that really helps me understand what they're doing this summer. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I just have to say, I have a solar oven right now in my house with, oh, chocolate remnant on the bottom of it and a reminder that I need to buy marshmallows. So, learning works.
Yep. Maybe we'll have some more solar engineers. That'd be great. All right. We have not received any public comments through our district website. As a reminder to everyone, if you'd like to reach out to the board to share your thoughts with us, you can submit comments to the board through our website. You can also attend the meetings that we have on the second Monday of the month. Those are at the district office, and we take public comment at 6:30. Or you can reach out to any of the board members. We have not received any comments at this time. Next up, Director Human will highlight the Board's Work Session.
We met this evening at 5:00, crossed the hall in the conference room. As you can see tonight, Dr. Zambrino, Chair Roche, and Director Weber are not with us, they were not at that meeting either. But we did go over our annual Conflict of Interest/Disclosures with Brady Hoffman, a procedure that we go through every year, making sure that we are not approving any contracts or making financial gains from our position on the board. We discussed the upcoming lease for display boards that will come up later as an approval item, and we discussed the resolutions that will also come up regarding the election that you will hear about later in this meeting. Then we had some public relations discussion. There are lots of opportunities to meet us out in the community, but also more formally, we will be at Night to Unite, we'll be popping up at the Wednesday Farmer's Markets that are from 2:00 to 6:00 at the Wacota Federal Credit Union on Southview. You'll see us probably on Halloween and on the road again. You have lots of opportunities to catch up with us, and we look forward to telling you about the accomplishments going on in our district, our Packer pathways, and our joint values that we have with the city. We're really pumped about that. Tim has his shirt, I can see, you're excited. And then we had an opportunity to discuss that we will be having a special work session next week, Monday, to go over how we work as a board. I think a really cool part of being a school board member is that no individual person has power, it's what we do as a group in representing our community. And so we're going to make sure that as a group, we're doing the best work for South St. Paul that we can by meeting with teamwork. And then we did some committee updates. That was our meeting. It was very short, and now we're here.
Thank you. Yeah, we got things done tonight, very quickly and efficiently. So Dr. Zambrino is out, but we are glad to welcome Dr. Winter to provide some updates from around the district.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm the Executive Director of Educational Services, and so I work in the department, predominantly around teaching and learning, technology, community ed, early ed, and adult ed. But I get the privilege tonight to just give a quick district update, and I really wanted to focus on kicking off the school year here this fall. And so the district is in the process and is updating our website to really make information accessible to families as they are thinking about getting ready for school here in August and September. And so I think the first reminder is just that we really want to make sure families give us updated contact information, and communication has been sent out about census information, just to make sure that if we ever do need to reach out, that we can do it quickly without any issues. And I think just the other reminders, school supplies, handbooks, any type of information around transportation that you may need to access for your child, educational benefit applications, in case we have any type of closing throughout the year, just to prepare ahead, and school calendars are all now accessible on the website. And then in particular, for our elementary families, we have some events coming up, just to help welcome you to the school year and to the sites. There is a Family Connection Day on August 29th from 10:00 to 6:00 PM. And then the first day of school for first through fifth is on September 3rd, and that kind of allows all of the students who've been there before to kind of get settled that first day. And then there's a Kindergarten Family Connection Day on that day. And then preschool, there'll be parent meetings that kind of first week, and then the first day for kindergartners is September 4th, and the first day for preschoolers is September 9th. On the secondary level, there is a Packer Essential, and that's on August 15th and 19th. And then on August 28th and 30th, there is Family Connect, and CLC is also aligned with that time on the 28th. And then just to prepare, September 3rd is the first day of school for sixth grade, ninth grade, and 12th grade. And so those transition years in sixth and ninth get them into the building before everybody else returns, but everybody else is invited then on September 4th, which is 7th, 8th, 10th, and 11th grade. And just a quick reminder that all this information is available online on the website. Thank you so much.
Dr. Winter, could you talk about what those Packer Essentials are and why it's important for people to go to that?
You know, there's a lot of, I think, behind the scenes to get kids ready for school. And so whether it's just updating information, whether it's getting schedules, whether it's getting your device, and there's lots of just logistics, and so those days are really set aside to kind of take care of all of that beforehand, so you feel prepared on that first day of school.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have our Consent Agenda items. These are items that are financial claims or staffing and personnel, and they've been presented in the Board Packet. This time, I'm asking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion passes. Thank you. Tonight, we also have a number of policies up for their third and final reading. These policies have been brought forward from the Policy Committee, and they've been reviewed at two previous meetings, at work sessions, I believe. And the policies that are up for the third and final reading tonight are 506 Student Discipline, 507 Corporal Punishment and Proton Restraint, 605 Alternative Programs, 607 Organization of Grade Levels, 610 Field Trips, and 507.5 School Resource Officers. Is there a motion to approve the policies?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Director Human, would you?
Yes, since this is the first time the policies have come up on an on-camera meeting, I thought we could just quickly go over what the policies are. Number 506 Student Discipline is a 25-page policy that underwent a lot of change, updating it with legislative wordings, and putting in a chart that makes it very easy to reference for our families and our staff to understand the repercussions for different behaviors as outlined by the state and through guidance with MSBA. 507, the biggest changes to that policy was, again, post-legislative updates regarding School Resource Officers and the wording around that regarding corporal punishment and prone restraint. School Resource Officers are not considered school staff, so that's really clarified there. 605, 607, and 610 did not have any major changes, it was really just updating abbreviations and reference numbers. And then 507.5 School Resource Officers is a brand-new policy, it's obviously something people have probably heard about in the news. It is just kind of defining what trainings and requirements School Resource Officers need to have when they're in their schools, the timelines for those trainings, and just kind of clarifying the role that they play. We're very fortunate, Dr. Zambrino always talks about it, but I know it's true also, that we have a really great relationship with the city of South St. Paul and the Police Department here, and we have no issues taking on this policy.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of motion to approve these policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Now, onto the business items for this evening. First up, we have a resolution. Let's see, I'm going to follow this order of business. A resolution to approve the acceptance of gifts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Brady Hoffman, would you like to tell us about the gifts?
Good evening. We have three monetary donations this evening. We have one from the Mendoza Navarro LLC for the CDLU, one from Robert's Funeral Home for the Senior All-Night Party, and then a donation from the South St. Paul Open Foundation for Tracking Field Coaching salaries. We also have a piece of equipment that was donated, a pediatric standard was donated to the Special Ed Department from Leslie Miller, and these standards are assisted devices that help individuals with physical disabilities or mobility limitations to stand upright. So something that comes in very handy as we're working with our students. So grateful for the donations from our community and all they do to support our schools.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Director Lala Burdi.
Yes.
T Felton.
Yes.
Human.
Yes.
W Felton.
Yes.
And Claflin.
Yes.
That's five yeas.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. We're lucky to have a community that supports our district like this. All right. The next item up is approving the purchase of display boards and authorizing the Superintendent and Finance Director to enter into a lease purchase agreement for those. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. And for discussion, I'll turn it over to Brady to describe these.
Good evening. Back in November, December, our tech department hosted an ed tech playground, which allowed for teachers and staff to come in and demo a bunch of different displays, and allowed them to provide input and feedback on what would be the most beneficial for them in their classrooms. So a really cool process that was used to narrow the devices down to three finalists, and then they were brought back in to do a more robust presentation to our Technology Committee. And based on those results, then staff were also surveyed to kind of rank which devices would make the most sense and be the most beneficial for them. And through that process, we've landed on the Promethean's displays. So these are display boards that'll be replacing smart boards that were put in place many years ago, as those things are kind of reaching end of life. So through this process, to replace them, we'll have to do this in about four waves of installs. So this is the first wave or the first purchase, to purchase some Promethean displays to start upgrading those within the classrooms. So this first wave is, the purchase amount is 224,876. We are recommending a five-year lease to finance this first purchase, and that will also allow us to retain resources to continue to invest in Chromebooks, laptops, our network infrastructure. So by leasing, it creates that opportunity to continue to invest in those other techniques that we have as well versus an upfront purchase. So tonight, we have the recommendation to approve this purchase and to authorize entering into the lease for these devices. So with that, I'll open up to any questions you might have.
We discussed these a bit at the work session, and they sound like some amazing technology that will help our students in the classroom and be a great way for teachers to interact with material, easily show things to the classroom, and did have a discussion about financing rather than outright purchase. And we're taking your recommendation on how to proceed with the funds, given all of the other technology expenses that we're facing with upgrades and repairs following the tech issues we've had earlier this year. and repairs following the, the tech issues we've had earlier this year. So for this, do see. All in favor, if there's no further discussion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to have a special work session. And I need a motion to approve scheduling this work session for Monday, July 28th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? This meeting will be for a board retreat for ongoing board development, some reflection and evaluation of our work as a board and our ability to work for the district and our community. So we will be meeting for, so review of our work as a board. Are there any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Chair Claflin, just a correction, it's the 29th it would be on.
Oh, okay.
Just for that motion, I just want to make sure that we've got that piece correct.
Yes, Monday, July 29th at 5:00. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion passed. Thank you. We'll be back next Monday for that one. And that is at the district office. And then our last two business items are on the election that will be coming up. So first, I need a motion to approve a resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district election.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And is there any discussion? This would be to call the election. Also, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chair Claflin, we need a roll call in this one.
I even circled, resolution. So it's a roll call. Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Director T Felton?
Yes.
Hume?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Lalaberty?
Yes.
And Claflin?
Yes.
That's five VAs.
Thank you.
A surprising result.
This is also a resolution. And I need a motion to approve this resolution establishing procedures for counting the write-in votes for the school board election.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? This simply says that we do not need to count and name every write-in vote unless it exceeds the number of votes that would actually win a seat. So it saves our county election officers quite a bit of work. And as it's a resolution, Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Director Hume?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Lalaberty?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
And Claflin?
Yes.
That's five VAs.
Thank you. The resolution passed. All right. That concludes our business items. And I'd like to open the floor to our members to give any updates to the, the board and the community from your committee work, or where you have seen a passion in our district. Director Hume, would you like to begin?
Oh, sure. I was able to go to the Splish Splash Bash this past week. And I know that that's not a school district event. But walking around, it was amazing how many school district groups were there. So many sports teams, so many coaches and staff, so many kids just really excited to be representing their teams even during the summer when they are on summer vacation and break. So I just want to point out the pride and passion that I saw from our community and from our school community at the Splish Splash Bash. It was a great time.
Director Wendy Felton?
Yes, I also was at the Splish Splash Bash. It was a lot of fun. That was my first time officially there. Seen a lot of people, great groups of staff members from, from our school district. Many of our sports departments were there. And it was a very, very nice event. And I also, being a member of the Senior Center Board of Directors, this week I also attended, we had a bus trip that attended up to Alexandria on Tuesday. It was a very nice event. Had a real good time up there last week. It was very good. And also, coming up with our Senior Center this Thursday is our cookout celebration. It's our, it's our July dinner, that luncheon that we're having. It starts at 11:30 until 1:00, if you're interested in coming to that. And a member of the Senior Center, we're due to come on Thursday. It'll be really good. I also attended the high school play called Under the Big Top. It was a very, very nice event with, with the middle school students. And also coming up this week, starting Thursday through Sunday at the Secondary Building, it is the prom play, which I am looking forward to. I will be there on Friday night, looking forward to it, having already seen the prom movie. I'm sure the dancing and the singing, it will be, it's a musical. It will be a very, very nice event coming up this weekend. We encourage community members to attend this community play for us. And also, one other thing that I have been doing some volunteer work, which is called the Relay for Life, if you're familiar with it. This is their 20th year anniversary for the Relay for Life, which is a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. And the, the main promoter of this, one of our former school board members, Shelley Forrester. I thank her a lot for doing this. This is being held Saturday, August 3rd at Lincoln Center on our track and field area. So it's a great opportunity as a fundraiser for the Cancer Society. If you'd like to come there, there's usually a couple food trucks there also to eat. You can walk, walk around the track and you'll see a lot of charitable donations. And there'll be a lot of bagged things that people fill out and sign on. And several, several booths also put up by family members in a promotion and thanks for their family. So, and if you, if you are a, have a family member who unfortunately passed away from cancer or are a cancer person who has survived and done well, you are encouraged to come to the Relay for Life, which includes Inver Grove Heights, South St. Paul, and West St. Paul. Like I said, at our Lincoln Center Track and Field, Saturday, August 3rd. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Tim Felton?
Yeah, we had the South St. Paul Open Golf Tournament last week. It was another great event. We missed the rain thankfully, which is pretty hard to do lately. And the Open gives all their money to South St. Paul Athletics and Activities. And I know they were looking to have a, a big year because it was our 50th anniversary. And I just wanted to thank, you know, all the golfers, volunteers, donors, the Open Board members chaired by Mark Duffy, they do a great job. So a lot of work goes into it and it was a good success.
Thank you. Director Lalaberty?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Over my summer, I've seen some of the South St. Paul sports teams also being great role models to our younger students at the Parks and Rec Summer Camp. The first one of the year was composure themed, we're the Packers. And the younger kids look up to those older students so much. The wrestling team was a hit. And I'm always proud of our athletics and the students being such good representatives of our district to those younger students. They're great role models. And I was at the South St. Paul Junior Players' Performance, Under the Big Top as well. Those kids were having so much fun with this play. It was just obvious in their faces that they were enjoying themselves up there. And I really have to thank our senior high students for again being excellent role models. They were there cheering on the middle school students and showing up to watch their friends and really showing up just to be there for other theater students. It's important that those younger students that are coming up through the ranks in any of our programs, activities, athletics, theater, see those older students being a great role model like that. And then over at our local issues meeting at the end of June, we had a live demonstration of our emergency response plan where we had a lockdown occur during our meeting. And because we knew the procedures, I, we were able to respond very quickly, very safely to an incident happening right outside of the Central Square Building. And that was gratefully resolved without further incidents. But for our community to see how we respond in that type of situation was very helpful. And then hearing more about the response to situations where we might need to evacuate students to another location, the Veterans Memorial Building down in Inver Grove Heights, they could really see how we've thought through situations that we hope to never need to enact, but that we really are ready to respond and can respond quickly. Besides that, at the local issues meeting, we also heard some interesting news from Dakota County Technical College about Z degrees, where there are courses, entire degree programs created where there are no book costs. So there's very little cost to entry to earn some of these degrees. And we will not be meeting in July, but we will be back in August. All right. So we are now at the end of our public agenda. There will be a closed session scheduled per open meeting law, Minnesota Statute 13D.05, to discuss a pending Minnesota Department of Human Rights charge with the board attorney. So I'm looking for a motion to move our meeting into closed session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The motion passes and we'll move across the hall to hold that meeting. Thank you very much.